Okay. We're going to continue with administrative reports. We have several administrative reports in today's agenda. Item 13 is an update on the homeless program. I'd like to ask our staff to tell us about this, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, good afternoon. Today's agenda item is to, for staff to provide a year-end report on the homeless programs that the city's been funding this past year. And then also to seek some council direction on how the limited funding that is available should be administered in the upcoming year of 2020. Just as a reminder, there's sort of two overarching goals for the homeless programs that we've presented. One is to provide permanent housing for those that are in our community. And second is to address the impacts of homelessness and their negative impacts on our community, such as preserving the neighborhoods and parks and other municipal amenities. So as a reminder, we funded through this past year seven homeless-related programs. And I'm going to provide just a little bit of information on each of these programs, a little bit of about how much it costs us and some of the benefits or accomplishments from those various programs. The first program that we funded, and we started funding this in the last quarter or the fourth quarter of 2017, is the El Cajon Housing Connections Program. We rely on Crisis House to administer this program. As you recall, this program pays for Housing Navigator, and then also housing or rental assistance money that the Housing Navigator can utilize to help folks get into homes. We allocated $150,000 this past year. This is our second allotment of $150,000. And we're able to use low, moderate funds, housing funds, to accomplish this. We've been able to, through this program, permanently find housing for 86 individuals that were once homeless in our community, which is a pretty miraculous thing. This slide here shows the progress by quarter for the last two years in that one quarter in 2017. As you can see, in 2019, we were able to place 22 individuals into permanent housing through this program. Also, I should note that the Crisis House has an agreement with the city that expires in March of this year. And in our agreement, we have targets for them to meet. And in each year that they've been operational, they've met those different targets that we've set for them. It's also, I think it's important to note, the cost per person to house. If you take our total investment in this program, divided by the 86 people that have been housed, it comes out to be about $2,800 per person to find permanent housing, or $4,400 per family, which, in the big scheme of things, in the affordable housing world, that's pretty inexpensive. Go to the next slide. The next program that we have funded is a Way Back Home program. It's administered through the Salvation Army. Since 2017, they've been able to place 73 individuals into permanent housing. And look at this next slide. This slide, again, is similar to the previous graph that shows by quarter, folks that have been placed. This last year, we've been able to, so far, with money still remaining in the contract, 38 individuals. And so this is an ongoing, very successful program. We estimate that this program costs about $230 per person to relocate them to a loved one or to some permanent housing. The next program that we've been administering is a program through the East County Transitional Living Center. And it is where we use community development block grant money to pay for shelter space at the ECTLC's facility. This past year, they've been able to provide 270 individuals with emergency shelter. And this is typically during the cold winter months. The city allocates the $100,000 using community development block grant monies for this. And it costs, if you average it out, it ends up being, I believe, between $40 and $50 per person per night to house somebody. This program has also been very beneficial because it's actually been a funnel to get individuals connected with our East County Housing Connections Program, and with the Way Back Home program, and with other services, and actually into ECTLC's other housing programs as well. So through that, we've been able to use that program to parlay 104 individuals to find permanent housing. And some of those are double-counting people that are taking advantage of the Way Back Home and the Housing Connections Program. But quite a successful program, and that doesn't even include the other things that we don't fund, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We also rely on the East County Transitional Living Center to pay for a program that we started and piloted at the end, or the second half of 2019, called our Clean Streets Program. We hire ECTLC and a crew with vehicle to go and make pickups around the city. They receive a route every day of places that they're to go. And when we see hotspots, we send them there. They also have a routine route that they go on where there's high-traffic areas of debris left. And mostly, it's anything could be debris that's left by people that are homeless or individuals that have homes. But they also play an integral role in our public work staff's ability to address the homeless trash that's left in our streets. This past year, they've made about 1,000 pickups, and have picked up 120 tons of debris off of the city's streets. This program costs $6,000 a month. It has expired. We no longer have their services. In fact, I recently reached out to the Public Works Yard, hoping to get them to come out, and was reminded, as I dialed the phone, that we don't have them, so we had to have our crews go pick them up. So if we were to renew this, we would put them back to work and get them, helping augment our city staff. If you look at the cost of this program, and then you take the savings that we're experiencing from our own crews, being able to do other things, and that's a savings of about $45,000 per six months. So we think this is a valuable program. Another program, and this is, by the way, funded through the general fund. Another program that we have relied on is the East County Homeless Task Force. It runs under the auspices of the Chamber of Commerce. This has really been the clearinghouse of big ideas. It's a way for thoughts to be vetted. It's a great place for community to come together. And if there's someone that wants to be involved with solutions, this is a place that we can send them. And they can either be involved or not be involved. But if you look at the number of meetings they had, they had 115 community meetings this past year. Clearly ample opportunities for anyone in the community that has a place in their heart for this to be involved in some way, shape, or form. And they're always looking for more assistance. The city did use general fund money this past year to help them run the program. That was within my discretion as a city manager, it's in my spending authority. When I pledged that amount, it was with other leaders from the other three East County cities, and with the county of San Diego. Where that pledge was made, I asked the other four governmental entities to just match that of what the city did. So between the four of them, come up with another $5,000. It's my understanding that as of today, those other entities have not come up with that match. It seems like an easy thing for our neighbors to contribute to the homeless programs. Counsel, this makes me feel that the city of El Cajon is on its own in this area. We also, although financially support the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, we do provide folks that go to their meetings. They're an important entity in our region. They distributed $1.7 million in homeless emergency aid program funds. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, which is pretty important. And they will continue to administer a second year of funding once this next round is completed. The last program that we fund is really more of an internal fund, or an internal program. It's city staff. It's no one we hire specifically for this, but it certainly takes people away from almost every department in the city, away from their normal jobs, and we focus solely on homeless issues. This past year, we've done a lot of work. We reached out to 20, on average, per week, 22 homeless individuals, offering them services. Many times, we accompany other service providers. You can see a lot of outreach going on in this slide. We also do a lot of cleanup. Here's a, I'm going to show a couple pictures of some of the cleanup that we've done. This is in a tunnel in one of our channels that goes under a street. This is what we found. This is us using heavy equipment to push that out and send that to the dump. Over the year, we have collected 176 tons of debris on city streets, sidewalks, parks, channels, creeks. If you do the math, that's 300, about 350 pounds of trash and litter that has been left around our community, that our staff has done an amazing job in cleaning up and taking care of, and ensuring that our quality of life in the city of El Cajon is better. Couple other examples. This is an encampment we found at Hillside Park. This is actually, this is on the skirt of city property and private property as it butts up the hill. This was not the only encampment found in that area, but we spent an entire week with city crews. Almost every single public work staff dropped everything we were doing, and we dedicated an entire week towards cleaning this hill up and cleaning out debris. Here's a couple, here's a before picture of an underpass. Here's the after effect, after we got there. We actually go into private property with this team as well when we see issues. Here's an encampment forming on private property. Here's what it looks like after we got done. So there's been a lot going on. And all we've spent $640,000 this past year on a per capita basis. That may be more than any other city in the county. I don't know that for sure, but I know that we are doing far more than most of our neighbors are doing. I think it's important to note, I'd be remiss if I didn't call out that we have many helping hands in our community. It's not just these seven programs that are funded by the city of El Cajon. There are many organizations, entities, individuals, groups, churches that have a passion for this and want to make a difference, and so they reach out. My staff reports identifies four of them. I'm just going to briefly mention them. ECTLC continues to be an amazing partner with the city of El Cajon. They do perhaps more than any other organization in the county of San Diego. Besides the 343 individuals that they served through our program, they served over 800 individuals through their own program, which is a religious-based program, which is not funded for the city because of that. They've served thousands of meals, and they are a wonderful conduit for getting individuals into programs, into shelter, into permanent housing. We work closely with the McAllister Institute. They're an organization that goes out and they help individuals find treatment and sobriety. They place people into sober living facilities. They're a great conduit into our Connections Housing Program, and through a Way Back Home program. They've done amazing work in the city of El Cajon. Meridian Southern Baptist Church is exploring lots of different opportunities, maybe even some tiny homes as a way to provide some temporary housing. So another example of just thinking outside the box and looking for opportunities to be involved. Their head pastor, Roland Slade, is a board member on the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, a huge advocate for the city at the region, and we appreciate a lot of his work. And we have even folks like Mr. John Simon, he's in the audience tonight. He's actually realized that a lot of folks that are incarcerated are also homeless, and as soon as our release are going to be released onto our streets, he reaches out to them and tries to establish connections with them and other service providers before they're even released. So when they get out of jail or prison, they have services waiting for them and are able to get into housing. So just a plethora of organizations and entities and individuals that are making a difference in our community, and really augmenting the work that the city's able to do with its meager amount of money. I mentioned earlier that there's some heap funding, homeless emergency aid program funding. It's been allocated by the state of California for the next two years. The Regional Task Force has allocated almost $20 million in funding throughout the region. $1.7 million of that is going to East County specifically. Crisis House is getting money for Housing Navigation, similar to our program. Home Start is another, a new organization in our community that we're getting to know. They have also received Housing Navigation money. The Salvation Army took our little pilot program that we developed with them and are expanding it county-wide. It's very exciting to be part of that on the ground floor. Maybe something we aren't getting credit for regionally, for helping to fund and get that little infant grown up. And I've also learned that Family Health Centers also has Housing Navigation county-wide, but they actually have an individual here in East County that's providing similar Housing Navigation services. So through this heap funding, it's my understanding that there are three separate Housing Navigation programs that are going to be funded to augment what we have currently going on. In my staff report, I talked about homeless, I presented some homeless enforcement data. I think it's pretty relevant because it certainly shows some of where we're going. And I want the council, and frankly, the community, to understand what some of the expectations from our community is, and maybe some of that may be a little unrealistic. But if you look at calls for service, for homeless-related calls specifically, you can see that between 2013 and 2018, it's grown dramatically every year. Beginning in 2019, we saw our first drop, which is pretty exciting. And I think there's a couple reasons for that. And I don't have scientific backing behind it, but I have sort of three plausible hypotheses, and they probably are all a little bit valid. One, I think the cynical part of me says people are tired of calling. It's the new norm. People expect it. When I talk to teenagers and I point out homeless individuals, they go, "What? They have a right to be there too." And so I think there's an expectation, or a new standard in our society, that it's appropriate to have a tent on the sidewalk. I think that we actually have less encampments in our community because of the work that we've done to find housing for individuals. And so there's less calls. I think another factor is our Quality of Life team has made a big difference. We were studied this last year by a capstone group from, or San Diego State's Public Administration Program. Graduate students are required to do a capstone project. And we had a group of four students that dove into our data, looked at every time we did an enforcement detail or an outreach detail, and then they looked at our call volume. And they looked at it since we started doing this. And they noticed a sharp decline in calls for service the three days after we did some sort of activity, when we were out and about in the community. And so the more that we're out in the community, I think we are proactively handling problems before residents feel that they have to call us and let us know about issues. Another point I want to make about law enforcement is, even though there are those that say AB 109 and Prop 47 does not have a positive impact, or has not impacted adversely communities with homelessness, we are anecdotally seeing that that is not the case. We know that last year, a minimum of 17 individuals that were released under the AB 109 program, which are individuals released early from incarceration through a probation program, were homeless. And we know that that number is heavily underreported. We know that individuals use county office buildings and other addresses as addresses that don't exist. And so we think that number is much higher. Personally, through some of my own analysis, I think it's more like 25% or 25% of the individuals that are released under AB 109 are released as homeless individuals. Last thing I want to point out is the Martin versus the city of Boise case has limited our ability to enforce, such as camping in public. However, I don't think the average El Cajon resident cares what the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals opined. I think they have an expectation that we handle it some way or another. And so we're trying to, within the bounds of the law, meet that expectation. As I talk about our recommendations for next year, that's a big factor into one of the recommendations I'll be making. So let's talk about next year, 2020. We came up with some factors that we thought were important in how we allocate funding for the next year and beyond. One is this infusion of heap money, and with Governor Newsom's proposal to add additional homeless funding, we think that that does play a role. And if there's some ability to augment what we're doing already with someone else's money, the state's money, finally, I think that makes sense, and we should take that into consideration. I think the impacts of the Martin versus the city of Boise case are important things for us to think about, and what kind of programs we allocate funding to. I think that there has been some evidence that there's a slowing down of activity with Housing Navigation, and that's in no way, shape, or form a slight on the Crisis House and anyone else that's doing Housing Navigation. I think that there's more Housing Navigation happening. So I think that has probably slowed down our program. I think that we've also been able to help many of those individuals that were ready to move into housing, and so our Housing Navigator's having to deal with more difficult clients and more difficult cases, and a lot more case management to do that. I do know that the county or the region has required some additional reporting that does slow down the whole process because there's more intake information that has to be gathered. But there is a noticeable slowdown in the amount of Housing Navigation that's happening. So maybe there's some opportunities to focus on other things. And lastly, I think whatever we fund, the notion should be that it funds long-term positive impacts geared toward getting people towards permanent housing, and not towards accommodating a homeless lifestyle in the city of El Cajon. So with that, let me talk about some of the, if you take all the programs, and you're to put them in sort of buckets or categories, we came up with these five categories. Clean streets and neighborhoods, increasing the supply of temporary shelter, looking for opportunities for more positive or proactive outreach with our homeless community, continuing collaboration at a regional level, and then of course, the ongoing Housing Navigation and Assistance. So based on those factors and those, sort of those bucket of program ideas, staff's come up with six recommendations that we're presenting for City Council consideration, and some dialogue, and some, ultimately, some direction and feedback. But first is, we think that it would be important to extend the contract or the agreement for Clean Streets with the East County Transitional Living Center. I think that's a high priority in staff's mind. I think that we continue our city's Quality of Life team. Again, no additional staff would be hired. We just continue to do some of the things that we've done. We meet on a regular basis and think what's working, what's not working. So we're always exploring opportunities to make that team better and more effective. But I want them to know that if we were to continue this, how appreciative I am because they do a difficult job that nobody else in this room would like to do, but has to be done. They, I also think that we should probably be focusing on the expansion of temporary shelter inventory. I think rather than the idea of one large shelter, like you see in San Diego, where there's several hundred people under one tent or under one roof, I think we have some amazing partners that we could form partnerships with, around the community, on a small-term basis or a short-term basis, small projects, maybe even kind of pilot programs. But I think there's some amazing innovation and ingenuity that I think we should take advantage of. I don't know how we get there, but if council thinks this is a priority, we'll come back with a plan of how to get there. And I think there's some value in that. While I'm making that recommendation, I think it's important that I sort of counter my recommendation with an argument. And that frankly, is counsel, is that we have a lot of temporary shelters. And this is data from the Regional Task Force on the Homelessness. But if you look at our temporary shelters on a per capita basis, and I use every 10,000 individuals, we have 2.5 times the amount of shelters than any other city in the county of San Diego. We have done our share. You'll notice that there are a couple absent names from up here. The city of Santee, the city of La Mesa, the city of Lemon Grove are not up there. And the county of San Diego's not up there. This is, I'm kind of going on a personal opinion here, if you can allow me this. The county of San Diego has talked about temporary shelters. They've actually allocated money for programs for temporary shelters, but have yet to build temporary shelters. In my mind, if the city of El Cajon is going to focus on this, I think a message needs to be sent to the county of San Diego that they need to step up their efforts in unincorporated areas that surround our community, that impact our community, like the areas of Lakeside and Spring Valley, and become a partner with Lemon Grove, La Mesa, and Santee to help them accomplish the things that we've been able to do. I know that there's a lot of critics of the city of El Cajon and what we've done in the past. Those critics should be silenced based on this slide alone. Moving on, I think that we need to increase our outreach. And I honestly don't know what that means, but I think there's opportunities to reach people at the right moment. And frankly, it's not always with an individual wearing a police uniform. And frankly, that's probably not the right person to make that outreach. We interact with them on a negative basis a lot of times. So having other folks to help us, we'd like to explore what that looks like. One opportunity for that is perhaps we put out a request for qualifications, or even a quest for, request for interest, to see what entities are willing to do and to help us. Counsel member?
Yeah, I think the El Cajon Transitional Living Center would be a great provider of that type of thing. We could contract with them to, because a lot of them came from that community, and they could maybe support and work on a task force, talking to these people, the outreach, I mean, and go out and talk to them and see if they couldn't. And you know, we could have a contract with them to do that. And also the contract that we had with them that expired, I don't see why the city couldn't, with the vote of the City Council, extend that for the next six months before the next budget is coming up. I would like to see that happen.
Absolutely. I think that using or relying on the ECTLC to help with outreach is a great idea. I don't know if they're interested in that. And that's the idea of doing a request for interest, because there may be a lot of entities where we're not just focused with one partner. We have six different partners that help us with this, and maybe each has a different niche. So it's an area that I think is worth exploring, and I think them as an ally in this area is a very positive one. I think that we need to continue support for our Regional Task Force and our local East County Task Force. And lastly, Housing Navigation Assistance should continue to be a priority. However, as heap money is augmenting or backfilling some of the work that we've done, this certainly allows us to use those limited funds. And as the staff report indicates, it's only about $250,000 of funding to other things that may augment what we need regionally. I'll point out, the funding source that we're relying on, this low-mod housing fund, is limited. And every dollar we take out of that, it's not being replenished with other monies. It is depleting this fund that we hopefully can use to build affordable housing projects like Cornerstone, by the way, which is 100% full right now. And so, and I'll get the council some more information on that shortly. But, so, we don't have money to do everything, so there are some decisions that have to be made at some point. But getting some basic guidance and feedback and direction from council based on these recommendations will help us present a spending plan for the City Council into 2020 and 2021. So that concludes my report. I apologize for its length, but there's a lot that we've covered and a lot of success that we've had, but some big decisions that are going to come up in 2020. So seeking to answer any questions that you might have, or helping to facilitate a conversation with the City Council.
So we'll start with questions of staff first, then we'll go to public comments. Any questions?
Thanks. Grant was very comprehensive, and I think we've got a lot to think about. I'd like to hear what the public has to say, and then we'll discuss some more. Angela, any speaker cards?
We do, sir. We have four cards. The first one is Anna Marie Piccone Snyder.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wells. My name is Anna Marie, and when I'm done with this job, I'd like to be the mechanic for the city.
Can you restore old cars?
I love that. Good evening, Mayor Wells, councilman, city manager, and staff. I am the coordinator for the East County Homeless Task Force, which is sponsored by the East County Chamber of Commerce. The chamber was responsible for the initiative of convening all sections, all sectors of the East County communities around homelessness, at a time when this was unheard of. Communities from Lakeside across the four cities to Spring Valley and out to Alpine and the Mountain Empire were operating in silos, unaware of resources and services available to their homeless residents. In 2016, when the task force began meeting, the East County was considered a service desert, and there was much desire to draw more service providers desert, and there was much desire to draw more service providers to the region and explore solutions that had worked in other areas. Through meetings, educational presentations, and strategizing, we have done this and more. In 2019, the city of El Cajon began assisting the Chamber of Commerce with funding, the coordination of this task force. We hope that other cities will follow suit, and we're very grateful for the support for these coordination activities, so thank you. For 2020, the task force has come together around the single goal of increasing the range of shelter and housing available to those who are homeless. For this reason, we do support the city manager's recommendation number three, to identify partners that can expand the number of temporary shelter spaces, with the caveat that that's only one step in the continuum that's necessary for shelter and housing for people that are homeless. We especially support the idea of a motel conversion. Brad Russell, who's here from McAllister Institute, lives in Chula Vista, and they've done a couple motel conversions successfully, and Brad says it's been very helpful for the homeless situation down there. We also support recommendation number five, to continue the funding of rapid rehousing. It's a permanent solution, and it also represents another solution in the continuum of housing needs. What's not represented is the need for housing options for residents in the extremely low income level, and we will continue to work with the East County communities this year to address this. Lastly, of course, we support recommendation number six, for the city of El Cajon to continue to lead the way by their example of funding and participation in the task force. I want to let you know that I am not speaking in my own voice, I'm speaking for the whole task force. Many of the members are here today. Would you mind standing? And many more are not here, and they are volunteers, all volunteers, and very commendable, and there are many businesses that support their staff people coming to these meetings and assisting with solutions and strategies. So thank you, city manager, and thank you, councilman. Any questions?
Questions? No. Thank you. And thank all of you for the hard work you do. It's very appreciated.
Jim Sidi-Gliano.
Okay, thank you, mayor, council, staff, and thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for your report. Everything is funding, no matter where it comes from, and every effort should be made to get as much funding as possible. There's never enough homeless situation. I've spoken to you about my own feelings here last year about the homeless situation and my personal contact with people. I think the, one of the most important things is the proactive action, direct action with the homeless people. I have some other suggestions about it, you know, and it's, I think that probably works best for the city, for immediacy. You know, I've heard ideas of people having the city have a van and going out and actually picking these people up and taking them to provide services multiple times on a daily basis. And as you know, mayor, a lot of these problems, be they drugs, or a lot of it's mental problems also. But that's all I have to really say about it right now, but it's an ongoing problem. It's going to be here for a while at all levels of government, as you know. But I really believe that that direct interaction with the homeless people is the first big step, and to get their, even their confidence. Two or three times, you have to go back sometimes to get people, for various reasons that they won't accept assistance. And I was, you were kind enough to let me speak, multiple three-minute sections one time, and I did speak about my own personal experience as a business owner. So, but I thank you very much, and thank you again, Mr. Mitchell.
Thanks, Jim.
Mary Case.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Mary Case, executive director with Crisis House. I just want to say I'm glad to see these recommendations come out. I think asking for RFQs with dates and some commitments with them, I think this is needed to find out who, what, who might do something that we don't even know about, and so that will, that will bring that out. It concerns me a little that the goal, the number-one goal, is to get permanent people permanently housed, and yet it is being threatened to lower priority for funding. That is the project that we're doing with El Cajon Housing Connections in the city of El Cajon. I think that the slowdown that was mentioned, there's a natural, as you saw from those graphs, ebbs and flows, highs and lows, just like the police calls, just like this. You've got to keep talking to people, keep encouraging people to access services, and it takes time. There was something different that's occurring in this last year has been the advent of a new homeless management information system called, and it's the Coordinated Entry System, and we weren't having to use that so much in our first year of operation because they were in the process of a change. So now that is affecting some ebb and flow in terms of who we have in the queue. We need to, they prioritize that, not us anymore. And so, so anybody that comes up as a resident of El Cajon that's homeless would come to us, but that takes, there's some delay in that timeframe. So I wanted to clarify that, and I also wanted to mention that the HEAP funds that are mentioned are time-limited. I know it said it in the report, but I just want to reinforce that a little bit. We were happy, though, to be able to, so for instance, if the money that, we have a budget for the one year for $300,000, if we spend it all, that's it. If we don't, we have the opportunity to possibly keep those funds in year two. It's not guaranteed. So if somebody else in North County is using those funds at a higher level, for instance, funds could get diverted if there's money left on the table after the first year. We don't know how that's going to go. So I just wanted to mention that because that can't be the only thing that we look at. And the $640,000 cleanup, maybe doing more housing would impact that. So I applaud that we're doing more housing, I'm just very concerned about the comments made in recommendation number five, when it's the number-one goal to get people permanently housed, and also there's $255,000 dedicated to rapid rehousing, which is what we're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Oh, Mary, Councilor Gole has a question for you.
Hi, mayor. At one time, you had a position called a housing locator in addition to a housing navigator. Do you still have that position?
We do, although it primarily targets domestic violence, that's who the funding source is for, but because she is looking for housing for those populations, she gives us a lot of leads for other housing needs. Can I just squeeze one thing in about recommendation number three? We need to look at how many of those beds are being used. If we have that many beds, why are there still people on the street? It's close to the number of unsheltered, so are the beds going unused? And if they are, is that about rules? So, and if we add more beds looking for an RFQ, please keep that in mind because it may not impact who's on the street at all if we aren't flexible about who we let in and take higher risk, take substantive users that, as long as their behavior is okay, we'll keep them in and we'll keep encouraging treatment. I tell you, Brad will be out there every day talking to people about treatment. So I'm just saying that we have to keep that in mind if we really want to impact on the street.
That's fairly controversial, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's fairly controversial, isn't it, the idea of housing people that won't stop using drugs and alcohol? Doesn't that put us in a position where we're encouraging that kind of behavior and we're...
No, I don't believe so. I did it for 39 years at Father Joe's, so it's a way to bring people in and then try and address the next step. If we just did bridge housing, I would say that there's people that we would enroll in that program that, for El Cajon Housing Connections, if they were in bridge housing, we could house them faster. It's sort of a nice funnel, so I just want to mention that. But remember, we have a housing-first initiative, and that does not require sobriety to go into permanent housing or temporary.
All right, thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Amanda McGimsey.
Hi, Amanda, welcome.
Good evening, council. As an El Cajon resident and as a volunteer for the East County Homeless Task Force, I am encouraged to see El Cajon refocus their efforts to bring more shelter and housing options to the city. Often when I speak with service providers, the number-one issue that they're dealing with is a lack of housing options for their clients. That is why the task force has made shelter and housing our main priority for 2020, and we hope that El Cajon can become a leader in the East County towards this goal as well. I encourage the city to strengthen their partnership with the task force and utilize the expertise and experience that our members can share. We are a diverse group made up of over 400 residents, community partners, churches, businesses, law enforcement, service providers, government employees, as well as current and former homeless. In 2019 alone, we held over 115 meetings working on a range of issues, such as youth and veteran homelessness, access to services, and of course, shelter and housing. Many of the members are here today to show their support to bring more shelter and housing options to El Cajon. One of the many benefits of partnering with a community-based group like the task force is having access to the collective knowledge of such a diverse group who have experience with the topic from a wide range of perspectives, and we have all come to the same conclusion that we need more shelter and housing options in the East County. As an example of how the task force can help support this goal, the task force developed the Shelter and Housing Report, which identified several interim and long-term housing solutions that cities, nonprofits, and faith-based groups can implement. Developed over an 18-month period, the report incorporates feedback from community leaders, government representatives, and service providers from throughout East County. As El Cajon continues to develop their shelter and housing plan, I encourage the city to utilize the Shelter and Housing Report as a resource, as well as reach out to the task force and use our expertise. The city should already have the report on file, but I will leave a hard copy if you would like to review it. I'd also like to invite the council to attend our quarterly general meetings. Councilman Ortiz, thank you for attending previous general meeting, I hope you found them valuable. The next general meeting will take place on January 29th, and we will have representatives from both the city of El Cajon and La Mesa to speak about their current homeless plans. We hope you can join us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
No more speakers, sir.